Thank you. Good afternoon. This is our second public hearing that we're gonna have on the milage rate. It's Thursday, August fourteenth. Commissioner Neal is gonna do an invitation and Commissioner Carson will do the pledge. Would you please stand?
Very good. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege of living in this field. We pray that we would give out the business of people and that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we go about it. This is your name, we pray.
And.
There was a flag handed to heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Watson, would you like to take it off?
I'll take it away.
Oh, you can leave.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As the chairman said, this is our second of three public hearings on the adoption of the twenty twenty-five milage rates. This is a visual of our milage rate process. The property assessor's office does year-round property reassessments to keep us in line with the legal requirements of being within forty percent of the market rate on our assessed values. We begin our budget process in January to find out when our needs are gonna be throughout the county. And then we receive the May growth and inflation report on our digest to give us an estimate of where we'll be. What this all means is that we adopt our annual budget in June, but we still don't know exactly what our property tax revenues are gonna be, so those are estimated. And then at the end of July, we've received the final property tax digest and we adopt the milage rate in August. And that's what we're here for today. We'll be adopting this at the August twenty-first board meeting. So we're required by law to hold three public hearings, and I'll explain why in a few minutes. This slide is just a quick definition for those that are interested in how to calculate what your property tax will be based on what your milage rate is. In nineteen ninety-nine, the Georgia Senate passed a bill called the Georgia Taxpayers' Bill of Rights. And what this does is it requires us to advertise a property tax increase and hold three public hearings if property values have increased due to inflation and the milage rate is not rolled back to offset those increases. So even though the milage rate is staying the same as it was last year, we still are required to advertise a property tax increase because the overall value of our tax digest has increased, which will mean we're bringing in additional revenue. So what is the rollback rate versus the milage rate? We do a calculation that looks at what our values were last year and compares that to what they are this year. And a calculation is done to determine what our milage rate would need to be to bring in the same dollar amount of revenue that we brought in in last year's taxes. So when this calculation was done for this year, we would have needed our milage rate to be three point six zero nine to bring in the same level of revenue that we had last year. As everyone knows, we're, you know, dealing with rising costs in our world. And so we're, we need some additional revenue to continue to operate as well as lots of new programs, new infrastructure that's going in that takes operating money to keep those up and running. So we had a, we're keeping our milage rate the same at three point eight six four, which is an overall increase of seven point zero seven percent of revenue based on what we had last year. On a home valued at four hundred fifty thousand dollars, the difference in the tax bill, it would be forty-six dollars of increase to the tax bill. So what that means is if we adopted the rollback rate, the tax bill would have been forty-six dollars less than if we kept it the same. Then the tax bill would be the same, that amount. So what this means to the bottom line is the total additional revenue to the county's general fund budget is approximately one point nine million. However, if you have a Scarlett Williams home state exemption on your property, your property is not affected and your tax bill will not change. This is a list of what our proposed milage rates are for this fiscal year. The overall total has stayed the same. The general fund rate is the same at three point eight six four. And we've had some changes between capital projects, EMS, police and fire, which I'll go over shortly. Just to note, this is the proposed rates that do not include the city or the school board. So those are additional taxes on top of just the county taxes that we're here to talk about today. So looking at the changes in milage rates between public safety and capital projects, we had a great need for some additional drainage projects this year that we could not afford to fund out of our, out of our current budget. So when we were looking at some ways to fund that, this was something that I proposed and the board accepted to move forward with this. So the way that we do the budget is we review all the requests that come in each year from all the departments, turn any excess that we can, that we can find, make sure that we provide for staffing, capital and operation needs for all departments, and try to balance our needs throughout the county with the revenue that we have to best utilize that revenue for our citizens' benefits. So when we were reviewing this year, we were able to utilize some of the public safety fund balances that have accumulated over the last few years. So the public safety funds are fully funded for full staffing. We have not cut any staffing. We've not cut in operations. In fact, those budgets have increased and to go along with the increased needs within, within those departments. They also have a requirement for a hundred days of operation emergency reserve, which is fully funded in all three of those public safety funds. As the departments have vacancies throughout the year, that money accumulates and at the end of the year, it goes into their fund balance. So that's how we have had, you know, the last several years, these fund balances have grown in these public safety funds due to some vacancies. Also, some additional operational savings that we've had by, you know, really working to reduce costs in our operations as well. So even after the reduction in the milage rate for the police, fire and EMS, these funds will continue to have excess fund balance over the required one hundred days. Fire will have seven million, police will have five million, EMS will have three million after the reduction and after the use of fund balance for this year to pay for some of their capital projects. What all of this means is, going back to this one, you see we reduced the police fund milage rate by point one seven, we reduced fire by point one one, and reduced EMS by point zero five and put all of those totals into the capital projects to be able to fund those drainage projects that we needed this year. So the point of this slide is just to show you that had we not changed the milage rates, the departments would have collected the amounts listed there over and above what they collected last year. So if we use police as an example, they would have collected one point one eight million dollars more in fiscal twenty-six than they did in fiscal twenty-five on property tax revenue due to the increases in our digest. With reducing their milage rate, they are still collecting one point zero eight million dollars more than they did last year for their budgets. So we are not cutting the budgets in, in these public safety funds. We are simply reducing the milage rate slightly to pay for capital projects that we needed. So our capital needs, we had two, two larger drainage projects that we needed to budget for this year. So that is where that additional funding is going to. And we were able to fund those by increasing the capital fund and decreasing those three public safeties without affecting the operations of any of those departments. Excess reserves in the public safety funds will continue to provide for the pay plan that was adopted two years ago. We estimate that the reserves that they have in those funds will continue to pay for those increases for at least three more years. And although the milage rate in these funds was reduced, they are still collecting more in revenue than they did last year. And we will continue, which is, you know, the fiscally responsible thing to do, to evaluate the needs of each department and all the capital needs throughout the county on a year-to-year basis. We've always done this. It just happened to pick up some attention this year. But we always evaluate the milage rates in the different funds to determine where the funds are needed and try to keep our milage rate as close to the same as we can. Any questions on, on this and how that worked?
No.
This is an example of property tax for the county only on a house valued at four hundred fifty thousand. That's the total amount of property tax that, that someone would pay in the different districts. However, this doesn't include the city taxes or the school board. When a citizen gets their bill, they just see the bottom line. So this is what that same tax bill would look like once the, the school board taxes are added in or the city for the city district. So this just kind of gives a picture of, of each, each different fund and each different district and what those costs would be. Percentage of the tax bill by levying authority, a breakdown. So if you lived in the city, seventeen point two percent of your tax bill would be going to the county, forty-three point nine percent would be going to the Board of Education and thirty-eight point nine percent to the City of Brunswick. And there's a distribution there for the rest of the districts as well. A chart of our forty-year milage rate history can see that we used to be at eighteen mils and that has continued to go down over the years. We had a slight uptick during the recession when property values dropped significantly. Our income dropped significantly, so we did have to raise the milage rate, but that has since come back down. And we have been at the three point eight six four consistently for the last three years. This is a graph of where the money comes from. You can see forty-nine percent of our revenue comes from property taxes this year and nineteen percent from sales tax. And then a distribution of where the rest of those funds come from to fund our entire budget. This is a chart of how much revenue is generated by property taxes. So all property taxes combined generate approximately sixty-eight million in revenue and it's broken down between the different funds per the graph there. This is a graph of how the money is spent. So fifty-four percent is personnel costs, seventeen percent services, fifteen percent capital improvements, six percent appropriations to other agencies. And this graph is where the money is spent by function. So forty-seven percent of our costs are spent in public safety, seventeen percent in public works, eleven percent in culture recreation, et cetera. These are just the departments, a list of the departments that are funded by the general fund. And then these are the, the items that are funded by the special services for milage rates. And that is the end of the milage rate presentation, so available for any questions that you may have before we have our public hearing.
Very good. All right, let's open up the public hearing for the milage rate. Don't see anybody out there. I guess in that case, we can close the public hearing. Gentlemen, I think that's it. I will entertain a motion to.
We'll, we'll have one more public hearing, which will be the night of the adoption on August twenty-first at the BOC meeting.
Make this a comment then. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.